In the meeting by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. To my life, the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand as one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Welcome all. Frankly, this is the largest crowd we've had since the new town hall opened. Tonight is the Select Board meeting, March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven at seven PM, and on the agenda at seven PM is the Charter Communications Default Hearing. We had a sign-in sheet for anyone who wishes to address us this evening. If you didn't get this, can we get you to sign in before you speak to us or before you leave certainly tonight? The first item of business that we're going to deal with is I'm going to read the legal notice, and you'll bear with me because this is kind of small print and kind of dry. But as it appeared in the Hampshire Gazette on March seventh of two thousand and eleven and on another occasion, this is the legal notice. Notice of Cable Television Public Hearing. Please take notice that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Southampton, Massachusetts, has issuing authority for a cable television license under MGL Chapter one sixty-six A will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March fifteenth of two thousand and eleven at seven PM. The public hearing will be held in the first floor meeting room at the Southampton Town Hall, two ten College Highway. The purpose of the public hearing will be determine whether Charter Communications is in violation of Section three point one C of its cable television license with the Town of Southampton by overcharging Southampton residents for cable television connection. All reports, correspondence, and licenses to be considered at the hearing that constitute the public record under the state law are available for public inspection during regular business hours and for reproduction at a reasonable fee. Members of the public are invited to attend and be heard on the topic described above. And that was dated February twenty-eighth was the date of the legal notice. We have three selectmen present, one on, two on the way, one for shortly after seven and one for eight. The three selectmen that are here are Douglas Blanchard, Anne Roy, and I'm Michael Phelan. How we intend to proceed is to take testimony from the public on the issues of the license violation. We have some written communications that I would propose to put into the minutes of tonight's meeting, and I will probably address those first, and then we'll move on. We have a letter from Todd Gallopin dated January twenty-fifth, and it concerns sixty Pleasant Street in Southampton. I recently sought out to have cable service run to my home, which is approximately five hundred feet from the road. Attached is a quote, is the quote of which Charter is only covering a thousand dollars of installation cost to install an amplifier so the signal can make it to my house. I was told to contact my town hall to see what contracts, contract is between Charter and the town to see if I have any recourse. I am currently a resident in East Hampton with Charter Services and cannot express any words my displeasure in dealings with this company. I continue to have billing issues, that's unrelated. I write this letter in case I am unable to make this evening's meeting. Please don't hesitate to contact me back at any numbers below. Attached to that is an estimate from Charter Communications for two thousand seventy-three dollars and five cents. I have a letter from Kendra Johnson dated, well, April twenty-fifth of two thousand and five.
That's correct, yes. Yes, I did try to reach her, but she didn't respond. But she still does live at that address.
I, Kendra Johnson of forty-three three Rattle Hill Road, am having trouble with Charter Communications. I am building a new home on a shared driveway. There are two existing services at forty-three forty-five Rattle Hill Road that Greater Media installed at no charge. Is Charter, having bought out Greater Media, still responsible for the contract that was made with Southampton? I was under the impression that all Southampton residents were beginning the same service as was the case with Greater Media Cable. Are all town residents with long drives going to be charged? I know of other residents that have complained to the cable company were given service. I would like to know the details of Southampton's contract with Charter. No one from Charter will call me back. I have enclosed their letter and costs. The estimate from Charter Communication Cost Worksheet was three thousand nine hundred and seventy-four eighty-three. I should note that there was a thousand dollar credit on there, and on Mr. Gallopin's there was also a thousand dollar credit. I have a letter from Parker and O'Grady dated January eleventh, two thousand and eleven, addressed to the Greater East Hampton Cable Television with a copy to us. Please be advised that my office represents Kathy, Thomas and Kathy Whitley of Maple Street, Southampton. The Whitleys are subscribers as the term is defined by the agreement of the Cable Television Renewal License granted to Greater East Hampton Cable Vision by the Town of Southampton on or about August twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-seven. Although the term of the contract has expired, the terms and condition of the contract remain in effect for as long as Great East Hampton Cable Division, Inc., or its successors and interest continues to provide services to the subscribers of the Town of Southampton prior to a new contract being entered into by the town. Please consider this a formal complaint that is being made against East Hampton Cable Vision, Inc., and its successors and interests under the nineteen ninety-seven contract, its parent company, for that company's failure to comply with the terms and condition of the August twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-seven license. I'm going to start summarizing. In November of two thousand and ten, my clients requested installation of cable television internet service to their Maple Street home. They were advised by the licensee that they would need to provide the licensee with the sum of two thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars in advance provision, for provision of that service and installation of the infrastructure necessary to do that service. On November twenty-sixth, my clients presented the licensee with a check in the amount of two thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. To date, no installation has been made. And the letter goes on from there. I would suggest that we enter those serially as Mr. Gallopin being exhibit number one, Mrs. Johnson exhibit number two, Parker and O'Grady exhibit number three. Is that the letters that I have, Diane?
Yes.
We'll take that from you now, sir. Can we have your name?
It started out as a thirty-eight hundred dollar estimate and was negotiated down to that price. It was to the point of like an auction, going back and forth to get the price down, so just a...
Mr. Bellicki has...
...the original estimate was thrown out, frustration, but I am going to get that paperwork.
Okay. This is dated three six of two thousand and ten. John Bellicki, if I'm saying your name correctly.
Yes.
Seventy-six Russellville Road. It is a Charter Communications Cost Estimate Worksheet showing a total project of seventeen fifty, a thousand dollar credit, balanced due to seven hundred and fifty dollars. And just one quick question, sir, did you pay that seven fifty?
That's dated fall.
And that'll be number four. So let's do this. If we could take testimony from members of the public in order?
Did our letter from December get entered into the record?
It didn't, but it will. I'm sorry I missed that. The date of that letter, Mr. Cohen?
I believe it was January sixth.
And that might be in there.
I'll find that in one second. Do I have, for Swanson? I don't think I did. I stand corrected, we're looking for your letter, but I have one more complaint letter from Gary Swanson. I don't see the date. October seventh of two thousand and five, new cable service at seventy-two A East Street, Southampton. As we discussed this morning, this morning, my check for one thousand one hundred and seventeen fifty-four is enclosed to cover the cost, to cover our share of the cost of running the hard line to our new house, six hundred feet distant from the new pole that Western Mass Electric is proposing to install on our side of East Street in the near future. Box for the drop is to be installed on the outside wall of the house as we discussed. I will provide a week's notice for you or your contract when our trench will be open. And there's a copy of the Charter Communi, the check from the Swansons to the Charter Communications. That's fine. I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, what date was that letter?
January sixth.
Yeah, I may have...
This is it, this is just a copy?
Yes, that's a copy, yes.
I would add to the record, a letter from Charter Communications, January sixth, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eleven rather, by Thomas Cohen, Director of Government Relations, response to the notification of the license default. I won't try and summarize the three or four pages that are here, but suffice to say Charter does not agree that they are in default. That would be number six. I just want to make sure I haven't missed anything. Nobody else has come in right?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Just one thing, where, January sixth? Give me the copy. We have the original of your letter. Now, we had a sign-in sheet, and just to be clear, tonight is regarding a default hearing for the charging of installation fees, and that's the issue we're going to deal with tonight. If you came here expecting to complain about the channel lineup, or you want the cooking channel two versus cooking channel four, we're not dealing with that issue tonight. We're dealing with installation issues tonight. So the first one that signed up on the, on the sign-in sheet to address us was Chad Fink, Jonathan Judd Circle. Mr. Fink, would you like to address us, please, sir?
Yes, it was spring of two thousand and ten. I called to get an estimate on the sound building, and I called the home, approximately nine hundred seventy feet on the road. Someone came out, measured it out. I got a estimate of four thousand eight hundred and odd dollars. I thought that was absolutely crazy. I called someone named Mike in eastern part of the state who was in charge of installation, and he said there was nothing they could do because of the distance. And I had previously put in a GDC run to the house from the pole. There's a pull string involved. I'm a licensed electrician. I have the price of the cable, three hundred and thirty dollars. So that shows you what's going on here. I realize there's an amplifier involved. It is not a thousand dollars as they're giving you credit for. It is much less. I offered to install it myself, the cable, if they would just hook me up. They said they would not guarantee my hookup if I did so, which at this point, I'm planning on doing that because what do I need their guarantee for? It's going to be a conduit. I'm going to install the cable. I've run miles of this stuff in trade. But I don't have any respect at all for these people that come in and are willing to charge the amount to a previous customer for years at a different location.
Mr. Fink...
It's up to me, I say get rid of them. There's enough people we can get in mind.
Mr. Fink, I missed the how much you were, they told you they were going to charge.
Forty-eight hundred dollars, and it's an odd amount, I forget exactly what.
Approximately, and was that with or without the thousand dollar credit?
That was with the thousand dollars.
So the actual charge was going to be fifty-eight hundred with it?
Yes.
And you're nine hundred feet off?
Nine hundred and fifty feet is approx. approximately a thousand seventy feet of conduit between manholes into the pole.
Coleman Road in. You're now going to be in the back off of Coleman Road.
Yeah.
Anything else, sir?
Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Next, the sign-in was Todd Gallopin.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gallopin?
Good evening. My name is Todd Gallopin. I also recently built a home on Pleasant Street, and you kind of covered the summarization of my details, which I also contacted Charter and had them give me an estimate to run service through pull tubes up to my house. They quoted north of two thousand dollars, of which they offered to cover a thousand dollars of that. I also dealt with a name, Mike, I believe it's Mike Tarleton is the gentleman's name. He told me that there was nothing he could do about the cost, but you know, suggested I run it up the pole if I feel that, you know, this is not adequate for running a service. I too had pull tubes all drawn up so that they could run the cable line up there. Unfortunately, mine were frozen, so I was unable to get the line put up through the tubes, but asked if they could put a temporary service in just by laying, you know, laying it across the main floor frame con. So as far as the cost was concerned, I reached out to Mr. Cohen, and you know, was explaining to me that the spirit of this, that you know, since I'm a, you know, a free service subscriber meaning cable, internet, and pole, and that I'd be willing to re-sign a two-year agreement, that Charter was willing to waive those costs. So I had not been charged as of yet for the temporary service brought up to my home. So this is all taking place since we ran that letter, so within the last six to eight weeks, this has transpired. Now, unfortunately, when they ran the service, they actually broke my siding on my house due to hitting the cable line off the house, so I still have unresolved issues with the installation of that, that I have not received any feedback from Mike Tarleton on after several phone calls. So I'm still seeking resolution as to, you know, some type of credit or something so that I can get my siding fixed, but I just kind of wanted to say that I have not been charged for any of the installation services thus far.
And when, was it this winter that this happened for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Fink, I can ask you when you had your problems?
It was two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten?
The new house they were constructing.
And Mr. Gallopin was sometime two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven?
Yes, sir.
And, and, did I understand you that you did get your temporary service in?
I did get the temporary service installed with damage at home.
And you don't believe it would be charged?
I trust what Mr. Cohen's told me and that the fees will be there.
So you signed up for a two-year contract?
I have not signed anything to this date.
Oh, okay.
Other than that, I have been a current Charter subscriber for the last, you know, several years.
Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Debbie Granelli, thirty-seven Maple Street?
Hi. So my husband and I live on Maple Street. We moved into a new construction. The house was set out two hundred and fifty feet from the road. We did speak, or I did speak with Mike Tarleton at Charter, and the charges that I was quoted, I have a figure here written down of three thousand nine hundred and five dollars, less than one thousand dollar charter credit. But when I total up the individual charges such as amplifier of five hundred and forty-six dollars, labor of two thousand one hundred dollars, materials of one thousand two hundred dollars, and attachment to a pole of five hundred and nine dollars, that comes to four thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. We opted to use an alternate service for our television in our home, and I have no way to rent any of the house.
You have no watch?
No internet.
No internet?
No. But it's too possible.
So you did not, in fact, did you subscribe, you didn't subscribe to charter?
No.
But this was the charge you were, if you had chosen?
This was in July of last year, July twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten. Thank you, ma'am.
Didn't subscribe.
Did not subscribe.
Mr. Phelan, I just wanted to know also that my service was also seven hundred feet setback from the road. That's the difference in my home.
Thank you, I was, I was missing that. Kim Talecki, seventy-one Leadmine Road?
Talecki, not Polenki. Yeah, the Talecki, Polenki, each other.
Oh.
We built our house too, and in January of two thousand and ten, we recorded a price of twenty-seven oh one twenty-three. Our house was set about three hundred and forty feet back. Got the thousand dollar credit, did pay the seventeen oh one twenty-three, and got the service. I was asked, I mean, I asked other than what the heck is twenty-seven hundred dollars? We had the conduit, pole, all that kind of thing, and they said we needed the amplifier to get better service at the house to set so far back. Also, they said that there would have to be police duty for the trucks, which there was never any police duty on our road. I mean, the Leadmine Road, there's not a lot of traffic there, so...
And just again, a fact that's now coming up, the four people that have addressed this, you all have conduit underground?
Yes.
So it's not pole-to-pole installation, it's conduit? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Swanson, seventy-two A East Street?
Mr. Chairman, I'm actually a little older than everybody else we spoke in here. This goes back to oh five, oh six when we built our house. But at that time, we felt that Charter was about the only game in town. I also thought that we'd been pretty well gouged by the time we got our thousand dollar credit, we were still looking at what's going to change. We're about six hundred feet back from the road, and again, this is cable and conduit. But we dug the trench, we backfilled the trench. Basically, all these people did was to come out and say for a couple of hours, drop, you know, unroll this conduit in our trench. Very little labor involved, and frankly, bottom line, I felt we get the hours done, and that's why we're here.
You were six hundred feet from the road?
Six hundred.
And your total price was twenty-one hundred minus a thousand dollar credit?
Yes.
And yours is a trench, but did you have the conduit in the trench?
Yes.
So was your...
No, no, they unrolled it's cable in conduit, it's about one inch or so.
So, but everybody else had conduit in the ground already for this? So we had a little different, they supplied the conduit to you?
They did.
And I understand that other places, the conduit was already there. Anything further? Mr. Whitley?
Excuse me. I'll try to get the...
Mr. O'Grady?
I'm Liam O'Grady. I represent the Whitleys. You have my letter that was dated back, if you put it into the record, it gets through back in January?
Yes.
Couple things were being addressed at the time. At the time, Mr. Whitley and Mrs. Whitley had paid twenty-three hundred and some odd dollars in charges in exchange for service. As of January eleventh, that still had not been installed. So when they called me, they were pretty upset about the fact that they had given the check they had paid for what they had been told they were going to pay, and they're still sitting there without any service. They asked me to come look at the contract, which I did, and we keep calling it a contract. It's actually a license, I think, and I think the terms are interchangeable. But when you look at it, it's actually a license under the Massachusetts statute, the telecommunications statute, that grants towns the right to enter into licenses with providers. And my position, I think the town attorney's position, and I know I disagree with Mr. Cohen on this because we've had some, we had some brief conversations about it, and I understand his position. But that license tells Charter what they can and can't charge. And if it's not contained in the license, they can't charge. So they enter into the contract with the town. The contractor license requires them to hook up every residence in town. The only thing that it talks about in terms of distance is what they call a standard installation versus a non-standard installation. And what that, what that language addresses is the tiny. If you have a standard installation, which is within a certain number of feet from the road, and I forget what that is, it says that that installation must be performed within a certain amount of time. The only rational reading of the opposite is if you have a non-standard installation, it doesn't necessarily have to be performed within that period of time. But it doesn't say they can charge whatever they choose to charge. The only reference in the license to charging residential hookups is in the instance where a residential hookup depends upon Charter hooking to someone else's pole and being charged a reasonable fee for that hookup. So that if there's a utility pole that doesn't belong to the resident, it doesn't belong to them, that owner of the pole can say, where can they charge to hang on our pole? And in the Whitley's case, that charge was five hundred dollars, and maybe five hundred four dollars. But the license says that that charge can be passed through to the customer. So that when Mr. Whitley, Mr. and Mrs. Whitley get a quote for two thousand three hundred dollars and some odd cents, five hundred of that is arguably a permissible charge to them, because they had another pole that had to be, that the cable on it had to be installed. So if you take that off, we're suggesting that there is the sum of one thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-seven cents that's not allowed to be charged by the licensing provider. That was inappropriately charged, and that's a default of their licensing contract term. Now, there's this, this issue of this contract term having expired, because it was, I think, a ten-year contract that expired and were passed out. When both parties continue to operate, you're operating under the same terms. You don't suddenly change the terms if they want to continue to provide service. It's presumed that they continue under the same terms until you negotiate a new agreement. And if either side is not happy with what's going on, you walk away. Don't keep providing services. Don't keep charging customers for the service. And don't keep charging fees that are outside of the bounds of that license. Mr. Whitley, I know it wasn't in my letter, I just found out about it, he obviously pulled his own wire through his own conduit, and was flat, confidently, no, you can't. So I'm sitting here and listening to the residents, I'm listening, I'm listening to their stories, they're all extremely consistent, that they're asking the licensee to provide a service to a residential address that's required by the license to be provided. There is no provision in the license that allows them to charge for it. And they are simply making the decision that they are going to make money off of the Southampton residents, their future customers, with no authority. And now, we're here coming into a time when the town decides whether they're going to enter into a new licensing. And I think it's important for the town to consider how its residents are being treated when they determine whether a new license is running the entered into with a party. And there is probably going to be further action taken on behalf of Mr. Whitley in terms of recovering the money that was rightfully charged. But I'm suggesting that the parties who are in contract with each other are the town and the communications company, so that you folks are really the ones who have some power to enforce. It's your license, it's your contract. You have rights under the agreement that don't exist for these folks. I mean, they're basically helpless. If there's a licensing agreement between the town and the communications company, that's the only game in town. Pay up or get out. And all of the remedies under this license are for the town to come in and hold hearings on the default, which is what you're doing, and we appreciate that. But on the inside behalf of Mr. Whitley, we think he's been overcharged, we think it's outside of the contract, and I trust him to be able to say... anything, and help field, or help help people, to check, and for the likelihood they can to understand why, not only why they were charged, but where the, the events, they seem completely unrelated to any real cost to the company. When, when you hear about a three hundred dollar cost for cable and a couple hours to pull it, it, it's, it's obscene even to be charged.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address this? That's the list. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to sign in.
Oh.
Hi, yes, Phil's a role here. Also, my name's John Willey, I'm located across the road. In two thousand and seven, constructed a new house, installed conduit from three hundred and seventy feet off the road up to the pole at the street with a pole line in it. Requested a price on cable, expecting to get a, you know, small upcharge, estimate of twenty-eight hundred dollars. Well, in the frustration with negotiating with cable, I couldn't get a direct answer, couldn't talk to anybody. I subscribed to DirecTV as a service and signed up to the DirecTV. Became re-energized, my wife works for government, I needed internet service that was quicker, and re-energized, I went back to DirecTV, I mean, I'm sorry, I chartered and asked for another price, what was the price, one thirty-eight hundred dollars? At this particular point, I, I sense, got rid of all my documentation, so I can't recall people's names, but talked to people and plenty of partners from a thirty-eight hundred dollar fee to initialize this thing, and somewhere in this thing, I went price is helping the businessman, finding out the cable, the hours taken to do this and pull it in, with a string argument, and the pipe in the ground. So that requires two connections, one in my house, one in the street, and to put wire in the ground. Thirty-eight hundred dollars was absolute extortion for this. I went back to the company, sat down, talked to them, come to find out, the price got negotiated down, thousand dollars odd, twelve hundred dollars, next thing you know, I'm paying seven hundred fifty. Well, it was still a tough pill to swallow, but signed up for the service because I needed the internet. I still think at seven hundred fifty dollars, it was still an overcharge. And I feel, while I'm Mr. O'Grady here, that if the town is going to look seriously at, at the services that this company's providing, and are doing this to, you know, customers in town, what are they going to do with service charges? Are they just going to just keep inflating them, or throwing numbers out to anybody that, that feels the right number? I don't have a whole much data on this.
Can we ask you to sign in, please, sir? Anyone else that wishes to address this? Town council, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, I haven't met Attorney O'Grady, but I will tell you that, and I haven't spoken with him, I didn't even know he was going to be here, but I will tell you and the folks here tonight that I agree one hundred percent with what he said. This license agreement is not what I would call a residual rights document. It doesn't empower a cable company to do everything it wants, as long as it's not prevented from doing so in the license. It is a license agreement, and the powers that the cable company has, as the powers that the selectmen have, flow from the express provisions of the license and nothing more. And if it's not in the license, my opinion is, the cable company or the selectmen do not have the power to do it under the terms of the license. And there is nothing in the current license, which is, as Mr. Grady said, the one that was executed and negotiated in nineteen ninety-five, and continues to be in full force and, as both parties are acting and behaving as though it is, there's nothing in that license that empowers the cable operator, the cable company, to charge a setback fee of the nature that you have heard here tonight. Now, the fact that that's not in the license tells me, as an experienced cable attorney, that it was not the intention of the parties to charge such a fee at the time the license was signed. And I say that because you see these types of provisions in licenses all over the place. And the reason they're put in there is so the selectmen and the members of the public know and have notice ahead of time of what they can expect if they have setbacks past the standard installation. That's the reason those provisions are written into a license. And that's the reason that Charter wrote such a provision into the draft renewal license. Charter is saying they have a right to do it when there's no provision in the current license, but they were very certain to write such a provision into the renewal license. And if Charter feels as though they have the right to charge that kind of setback calculation when there is no provision in the current license, then you have to ask yourself, why did they need to write it in to the renewal license? So I spoke in November, perhaps it was December, late November. I reviewed the license, I gave the selectmen my opinion at that time, that what Charter was doing was outside their authority under the currently existing license. There was no authority for Charter to be doing that. And indeed, Charter has not been doing that the entire time, I suspect. Because of that, my opinion that they are acting outside the authority of the license, it is a violation of the license, and that continues to be my, my opinion. I have read the, the letter from Mr. Cohen, I have spoken with Charter representatives, I've heard what you have to say tonight, I've heard what Mr. Grady, O'Grady had to say. Members of the board of selectmen, it continues to be my opinion that this is outside the authority of the license and therefore in violation of it.
Thank you. Anyone?
Question from town council, but that being said and understood, is there a mechanism, and what would the mechanism be, by which people who were overcharged can expect to receive the least part of compensation?
There is no mechanism by which, under the license, the issuing authority, the selectmen can force repayment. The remedy that the selectmen have, and it's their license, as, as Mr. O'Grady said, is to invoke some sort of sanction against Charter. And the sanctions that are available are either cancel the license, revoke it, or initiate what are called liquidated damages. Liquidated damages are daily fines or penalties and a certain amount provided by the license available. And the fine is assessed every day until Charter corrects or cures the breach. And that is done after the selectmen conduct a public hearing, and after Charter has given notice and opportunity to be heard, and after Charter comes into the hearing, as they have tonight, and, and they've, they've had their say, and they're, they're allowed to rebut it, and it is done after the selectmen then make findings to the express issue of whether the license has been violated. And after all that, if the selectmen so fine, they may then begin to impose liquidated damages, and perhaps from that, some sort of settlement can be negotiated. That's the remedy.
Then the next logical question would be to the board of selectmen, who can undertake any of this type of action.
We are going to hear from her before we do anything. It's their, the floor is theirs, and Mr. Cohen, if you're going to speak, I would just ask you to sign in, because we didn't have you sign in beforehand.
Is there any history of pre-existing installations at the pound of there that were over two hundred and fifty foot, by the way?
What I suggest we do is we will hear from Charter, we'll come back to the audience for any questions that may be there, then we'll go back to Charter for a response and probably end it there.
Thank you. With me is Susan Westfall, our Vice President and Assistant General Counsel. I, I think we need to put this in the context of, of the license that we're talking about. It was, it was issued in, in nineteen ninety-seven, August of nineteen ninety-seven. The primary construction-related provision of that license required Charter to build out the system and, and complete an upgrade of the system within sixteen months. We completely built out the town of Southampton and upgraded the system by the end of nineteen ninety-eight. We built along every street, we marketed it to every house in the town. Anybody who wanted to purchase cable system at that time could and did. We went far beyond the requirements of the license. The license required us to upgrade to four hundred and forty megahertz and eventually five fifty. If we had followed the terms of that license, there would be no HD service today. We made an additional investment in the system throughout the town, built it out to seven hundred and fifty megahertz, so we now have many HD channels, we offer high-speed internet service and telephone service. We were required to make cable service available to every home in the town, and, and we did that, and we continue to do that. We have been in full compliance with our license since day one. The troubling thing I'm hearing tonight is that, and I, I took the time today, and Mike Tarleton, our construction manager, gave me a tour of the entire time. I drove by probably all of the houses represented by the people here tonight, and, and these are not ordinary construction, or cable installations. I mean, nine hundred feet, eleven hundred feet, we, we're, we're a business. We build our system and sell our services. We try to provide the best services possible to all of our customers at, at a reasonable value. The, when somebody needs an extraordinary construction cost, they call us up, we, we do an immediate survey to determine the exact cost of that, and we only consider labor and materials. We will pay the first, have you heard tonight, we'll pay the first thousand dollars, which is far in excess of what a standard installation for cable typically costs. And then we, we work with that customer, we want these customers. But you have to understand that when somebody says, okay, they, they went out and priced cable, you can't use drop cable when you're going beyond two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet. You have to use a heavier, hard-lined cable. And in the case of, of the Whitleys, and in several others, you have to add amplifiers. So you're adding extra electronics, and everyone in here tonight is talking about a one-home line extension. It's not a new development where we build out and there's, you know, half a dozen homes or something like that. Each of these homes was built, probably with the exception of, of this gentleman, after this license expired in two thousand and seven. We have been working with the town, we have continued to provide all of our services, we have continued to make all the payments to the town we required. In fact, the, the largest payment, it, it's unrelated to tonight's issue, but the PEG Access Capital Grant of thirty thousand dollars wasn't requested until a year after the license expired. We paid that. We continue to pay the annual fee for that. I mean, we're, we're operating in this town, but in fact, we would really like the, the town, and we think as the issuing authority, the town has a responsibility to negotiate a renewal license. It's been almost four years now. There was never any intention in nineteen ninety-seven to do something in perpetuity. We, we negotiated that license with the town, knowing that we could build it out to every street, and we did that within the sixteen-month timeframe. So that it's, it's, and, and, you know, I've only been with Charter for three years. Greg Yerbe, Greg, Greg Yerbe, I'm sorry, who's our Vice President and General Manager, has been with Charter and Grady Media for twenty-eight years. This is the first time he or the company has ever been at a breach of license hearing. We operate in fifty-three towns in Massachusetts. We treat our customers well. We respond to our issuing authorities responsibly. So we, you know, I, I don't quite understand how this has become, reached the level that We, we, and, and, you know, what, what your counsel did not say is that we certainly put a line extension formula in the renewal license, and we've been talking about that for several years. It's in just about every cable franchise he can think of, probably. It's not an unusual thing. It's to protect both parties. But the, the licenses that's been in place since nineteen ninety-seven requires us to make cable service available. We make it available. We don't say no to anybody. If somebody is at an extraordinary distance from the cable plant, we do a survey and tell them what their cost is, and, and what our share is and what their share is. And, and we work with everyone. There's several people in the room where we've gone to extraordinary lengths, because we want them as customers. And, and I, I can remember at, at the, at the hearing on, on November thirtieth, Mr. Blanchard pointed out that, that as an electrician, he knows about national grid and mass western electric, and that if somebody builds a house an extraordinary distance away, they'll go a certain length and charge the customer the rest. And that's a utility that's guaranteed a customer. When we build to a house, if it's going to cost three or four thousand dollars, we have no guarantee that that customer will stay with us for three months or buy any of our services. I mean, it, it, we're, we're in a different situation than a utility, and, and I certainly, you know, urge the selectmen to consider those factors.
I was just going to say, we'll go in order if this, if you want to go first, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. If I may, in regard to the comment I made at our last meeting, I was under the understanding we had a signed and legal agreement between the town of Southampton and you folks that had, after two hundred and fifty feet, they would charge. I was not aware that we did not have that agreement. And I realize it's the standard of the trade with the utility companies, power companies, after X amount of feet underground or whatever, it's so much money here and there, but we do not have that agreement with you, sir, and I thought we did at that point.
It's standard in the cable industry as well. And, and making cable service available to every home does not mean you have to build to every home at no cost. Ninety-nine percent of the homes are built that way, but every home that I drove by today was, you know, there, there were several that, there are no leaves on the trees, and I couldn't see the home from the road. And there are certainly others that, that if I was standing on the road, I couldn't hit a golf ball to that house. They, they're setback far. They're not your typical home, and it was the decision of the person building that home for their quality of life to be a certain distance off the road. There were a number of other towns, or houses that I passed today under construction that are close enough to the road that will build without any charges.
Mr. Cohen, I'm going to stop you there, because we, we're supposed to meet with the finance committee also, but this has gone much longer than we anticipated, gentlemen, so I don't want to hold you here all night for a joint meeting on the budget. It seems like we're going to need the evening for, for this issue. Would you, would you gentlemen be available, try and pack it into next week's agenda?
I think we will.
If it could be the first thing?
I don't know what next week's agenda looks like.
Yeah, we already have a set agenda.
I didn't, it, it, I thought we'd be nearing the end, and we're, I don't think we are.
No, that's fine, we'll, we'll catch up.
All right. We need to, I think we should review our budget and start reviewing the budget in general. I apologize. Is that agreeable with the rest of the board? I just think it's-
Mark, just mark him up.
Really, keep you guys here. Thanks.
Take as much time as we need.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen.
No, it's, it's, you know, it's, we're trying to, to, to build out and to get to as many new customers as we possibly can. It is not in our interest to charge more than people can afford, but we, we have certain design costs and, and build costs to get to these homes. And, and in the cases that were, were brought up tonight, there, there are extraordinary costs.
My suggestion is if, if the members of the select board have Mr. questions for Mr. Cohen, it would go in that.
No, sir, nothing at this time.
Go ahead.
I apologize for being late tonight, I apologize. Do you know if, if before the, the license, the contract expired, if Charter charged extra fees for connection costs? Do you know if they did that, or did you guys do- Did you guys do that before? Can you say that honestly, that they?
We may have, but it would have been consistent with our license.
This town's a little different than Chicopee or East Hampton or Holyoke. And these are the kind of lots we have in town. And so this may be something we may have to talk about as we move forward with the new contract. But I think we're sort of bracing this under that typical contract law. And I'm not an attorney, I'm a physician, so I don't know that much about legal stuff. But I know that when I sign a contract, that's the contract. And so I negotiate a new contract, that's the contract. And if your company back in 97 didn't have the foresight to say, we need to charge more, to put these extra lines in, that burden of not knowing what you were signing as a company back in 97 shouldn't be a burden for us now.
With all due respect, it's our position that we've always been in full compliance with our license from day one to today.
Your license didn't allow you to charge.
No, it does not say that.
You agree with that?
It does not say that we're not allowed to charge something. I mean, when Attorney O'Grady said something about, you know, the license outlines what we can charge and can't charge, that's not accurate.
I think it would be accurate if there was verbiage in a contract of what you could charge. Am I mistaken in that?
This particular license doesn't get that specific.
But your new license does.
A better license would. So that we're not in a situation like that.
So you're recognizing that you signed a contract that was not in your favor in 1997?
No, I, we signed a license that was for 10 years. We did everything that we were required to do under that license on time. And the license, in our opinion, never prohibited us, if there was somebody a long distance off the road, from having that person share in the construction to their home.
Why is it in there now? Why does it have to be in there now?
Because clearly, this wasn't clear enough. It wasn't put in there till after the November 30th hearing. I gave your attorney a new version within three days that included the line extension.
Is that in other contracts for a town?
In just about every one of our contracts.
So since 97, somewhere along the line, you decided it had to be in your contracts, correct?
Some of them go back before that, probably.
If I may interject, I've been doing cable law for a long time and for multiple companies before I came in-house with Charter. As the industry has developed, going into essentially what's called contribution and aid of construction, those types of extent, or those types of provisions have entered into cable contracts, you know, across all operators. And they've developed over the years. Probably if we sign a contract today, there'll be new improvements in contracts next year. So we're working with what we, essentially what was state-of-the-art then. This language is fairly open-ended. It says we'll make available service to all residents. Make available. It doesn't.
I'm talking about the charge, though. There was no provisions for that.
There's no aid in construction provision in this existing contract. But they have certainly come into being, not only for Charter, but other cable.
And I totally recognize that things change. But I'm just saying, you signed a bad contract. That's what Charter did back in 97, knowing that there'd be extensive costs. And they didn't think ahead on the contract that you guys signed, that you wanted to have that in your contract. Now you do, which is fine. That's what you want now. But there was a learning curve in there. And that change wasn't in the original contract. You signed a contract for what it is, the way it is.
But certainly, our viewpoint would not be that we signed a bad contract. We signed a contract that says the language it says. And we believe that we built.
So do we just renew the same contract from 97?
Well, I think that's why Mr. Keugig and Mr. Cohen are in some discussions with the Board of Selectmen to come up with what is going to be the appropriate contract going forward for a new term.
But you wouldn't just sign the 97 contract.
I don't think you would want to either. I mean, I think essentially, you would want to come back and look at how the industry has changed. I mean, internet has changed, although internet is not the subject of cable franchise. But just think about how things have changed since 1997. You would want the benefit of that, as would we. I mean, we're looking at a different industry completely.
Well, the industry as it stands in town, which is probably the unstated point, there is no competition.
Well, there's plenty of competition. There's a lot of dishes in this town every time.
There is no other cable contract or cable service in town.
We have a non-exclusive license in this town and every other town.
What I'm trying to say is there is no competition.
There is competition.
There's no choice.
There's plenty of competition.
There is no other hard-line provider.
We are the cable provider. So under this license, we provide video service. DirecTV and Dish Network also provide video service.
We're talking cable companies.
It's video. What we provide under a cable license is video. We made the extra investment because we know our customers who take cable subsequent to 1997 also wanted internet and a choice in phone services. So we upgraded our network again, far beyond what's required in the license, that we can offer that. So our customers.
I'm just saying, for the individual homeowner, just to state this. So if I may, Mr. Whitley. Mr. Whitley wants cable service at his house, and he goes down to the cable store. There's one store with one price. There is no choice for a different cable company.
What he's shopping for are multi-channel video services, and there are choices.
Actually, just not to confuse it, he's asking for a cable connection to cable service. What he gets for service, what package he wants.
Charter is the licensed cable provider in this town.
That maybe, but there's no competition.
You have the authority to bring in competition.
But as it stands and has stood, and as it is in most towns, there's only one cable service in the town putting up cable, especially a town this size.
You know, there are 110 towns in Massachusetts that have more than one cable provider.
Not a town this size with geographic shape. I'm saying is they don't have a choice. They don't have a choice. They can't say, you know, I'm fed up with that service.
There is one cable company licensed by the Town of Southampton.
There's no competition to come in to provide another cable service. So the town citizens are sort of strapped. This is the only choice they have. And they're not getting the service they want.
They're getting more than that. They're getting more than cable TV because, again, we invested in the network and we're providing the high-speed internet. In the last years alone, we've increased the speeds of our internet service twice without any additional fees. We've added 25 channels of HD in the past 18 months, probably. That's what our customers want. We gave them a choice. Competition is what everybody's looking for.
There's no competition for installation of cable.
Since the 1996 Telecommunications Act, the cable industry was allowed to get into the phone business, and the phone industry was allowed to get into the video business. We stepped up to the plate. We made the investment to give people a choice in telephone service. If you're having a problem with the telephone company not getting into the video business, I would suggest you talk to Verizon.
I'm sorry. Can you just clarify some of the answers that he's just giving me?
My opinion is there is no competition here. The fact that the Selectmen have the power to issue multiple licenses is not the point. The point is, nobody else wants to come in here because of the economics of the cable industry. The conventional rule is whoever gets there first wins. You have to have more than 60% or 70% of the market in order to make a profit. So whoever gets there first is going to be the cable provider, and nobody else is going to want to come in. There's no competition here. There are, there is competition in some communities. But the fact that there's competition in Belmont, or competition in Quincy, or competition somewhere else doesn't mean you have competition here. You don't have competition. I know that, you know that, everybody here knows that, and so do they, all right?
Two points. We want to be here. We've been here for a long time. We appreciate the opportunity to be in Southampton and to provide services to the residents of Southampton. The second thing is, you know, Verizon has chosen to go to 110 towns. RCN is in a number of towns. Why they haven't come here, it's a question for them. We got into the phone business. We're taking more phone customers, more phone customers are choosing Charter than video customers are going somewhere else.
I have some questions that maybe we, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's what I was coming back to. I have here what I assume is the contract that has a term of license from August 24th in 1997 to August 24th of 2007. Can we agree that was the term of the original license?
Yes.
And within this original license, I've been scanning it and reading it tonight and have looked at it in the past, where in this existing license were you allowed to charge for other than, more than a standard applica? What is a standard drop or whatever the term of art is that's used?
Well, there's two things in the license. It says, we will make cable service available to every home. We did that. We did that in the timeframe that we committed to, which was 16 months, completed by the end of 1998.
And that is at?
The other section, 12.2, defines the standard installation as 125 feet.
All right. But page 21, section 4.2, service available to all residents. Subject to the sections 3.1, 3.2, and 4.1 supra, the licensee shall make cable services available to all residents in town. From there, where do we get to the leap that you can charge?
One of those caveats is that if we can't get reasonable access to poles, we can say no.
Where from this section that you make available service to all residents do we get to charge to install cable? Where is that section?
It is silent from both directions, whether we can charge or can't charge. But.
Doesn't say it.
In the cable industry, the cable industry is not an incumbent telephone operator. We are not required to provide universal service.
If it's silent here, where do you get the authority to charge us? Point that out to me. If it's silent here, it doesn't say you can or can't, give me the authority where I go outside of this document to find that you can.
We make service available to every household by, if, and some of the people represented here tonight, we'll tell them, you chose to build your home 1,000 feet off the road. We will do a survey. We'll tell you exactly how much it costs. You're going to share in the construction cost.
That's not an answer. I'm asking you for the authority, either in this document or somewhere else, giving you the right to charge residents for installation. I understand you can bill them. I'm asking where the authority comes, either in this document or somewhere else referenced, to get a charge.
I think what Mr. Cohen has said is that it's silent both ways. There is nothing that says you can't charge. There's nothing that says we will charge.
There's probably nothing that says we can charge for cable service. But it's kind of understood that we're in a business.
We are in Southampton, and we don't want to go there.
We're in a business.
No one's denying you're in a business. We have a contract here.
And it's a business to serve all of our customers. And all of our customers are not served if we're paying $4,000 or $5,000 to do drops. That cost is going to get passed on to everybody.
And to be clear, when you mentioned the PEG grant, that gets passed along. It's really not a grant. It gets passed along to the subscribers.
When the town requested it, almost two years after the license expired, I didn't say, no, we can't do that anymore.
No, you honored the license that was in effect.
We have always honored that license that's in effect. We still do. But I've been trying to get a meeting with the town to discuss the renewal for two years now.
And we've had some.
To get a license that's a little clearer.
And we've had some meetings. In all fairness, we've had some meetings.
We haven't had a sit-down to discuss the language of a license.
Again, I'll ask you again. Where in the document or somewhere else is the authority to grant it to Charter to charge? And what's the rate? Where is it specific? Where do I find that? How do I tell my citizens, here is why they're doing it, and here's how they do it? And I take it from the silence, there is no answer.
You can tell your citizens, as I will tell them, that, you know, if you choose to build a home that far off the road so that we have to extend more sophisticated cable plan, not just a drop, which everybody else gets, then you're going to pay. I mean, if you chose to build your home 1,000 feet off the road, I think you're going to pay a lot more for snow plowing than the guy who builds his home 30 feet off the road. So that you know that there's going to be additional expenses involved in choosing that kind of a lifestyle.
I don't disagree with you that it may be fair. And it may be what you want to do in the future, and it may be a good business model. But where in this contract does it say you can't?
Where does it say we can't?
Is this, then show me where that ambiguity gets resolved in your favor. Give me a point where I go to say, if it's not mentioned, you get to decide.
There's two things. It says we'll make it available. We make it available. We haven't said no to anybody. We built every street. There's another section that says a standard installation is 125 feet.
Is there somewhere in here that defines, we'll make service available? Is one of the terms that's defined in the contract? No. So we don't even know what it means to say, make service available?
You know that we've built every street in the town. And you know that we built it 11 years ago.
Is service available on a standard?
And there hasn't been a complaint or an issue about this until November 30th, when it came up at a public hearing.
Which is the purpose of public hearings. But.
Even that was three years after that. We've been trying to get a renewal license to clarify these issues. But our position is strongly that we've always been in full compliance with the license.
Let me ask you this. If service is available to every member of the community, does that mean that you simply bring it to the pole in front of a standard location? Is that service available? Or is service available when you bring it to the home?
It's when we market to that house and say, do you want cable service?
Is that defined in here? Service available.
We sell cable service. We go, at one point, we went door to door, every door. Do you want cable service? That's making it available.
And I think David asked you. But in the term, during the term of this original contract between 1997 and 2007, were persons or citizens who lived further than a standard drop charged for installation of their cable?
They may have been. And that would have been totally consistent with our position on the license. We made it available. In your case, because you were so far off the road, there is a share of construction. We only charge labor and materials. And we come up with the first $1,000, which, again, is way beyond what a typical installation costs.
Where were the rates set?
Excuse me.
How were the rates set? On what basis? How would anybody know where to go to?
We do a survey, and we know what our labor costs and our material costs are. We either use in-house people or contractors, and we get bills.
Are those published anywhere, the rates? Are the rate?
No.
Not published anywhere?
And you also keep talking about it, people want to build their homes 1,000 feet off the road. But here, we have five folks in here, 340 feet, 250 feet.
Anything beyond 250, 300 feet is more than a drop cable. And it's a heavier cable. It's more expensive. And at some point, you need an amplifier as well. And pole licensing. There's extra pole licenses involved in each of these. And in terms of, one of the Whitleys issues was that they gave us the money and we didn't build it fast enough. Yet in the proposal we gave to them, it clearly says that it can take four to six months to get a pole license. We don't own poles. We have to rent them from either National Grid, Western Electric, or Verizon, whoever the pole owner is.
Anybody on the Select Board have any further questions?
I have one question. May. Who physically owns or legally owns the physical cables themselves in this town through which you provide service?
Charter does.
Not Verizon?
No, we own the cables. We built the system. We don't own the poles. We lease all of the poles. And when somebody builds a house and there's a new pole, we have to license that pole. And that can take months just to get the license. And we pay for that every year.
Thank you. I think what Mr. Phelan was commenting on with you is it was not through mutual consent that you were charging these people. You were charging them on your own. It was not a mutual consent between the Town of Southampton, Board of Selectmen, whoever it may be, and you. And that is the problem now, sir.
It was a contract with each of those customers. We gave them specifics as to what the cost was.
You have no right to do that, sir.
We, under this license, we have a request. Under this license, we have a right to sell cable service to every house in town.
I'm going to come back. I guess the way to handle this now is if the citizens have questions for Charter, I'm going to ask that you direct them to us. I don't want this to get into a give and take between Charter. Pose your question to us. If we think it's appropriate, we will either refine your question or direct it to Charter for them to answer. Or if it's a question for us, we'll try and answer that also. Sir, Mr. Finney.
Yes. We heard them speak about, for days, were advanced technology, high definition. That has nothing to do with later costs installing the cable. We were told about it is not a simple drop cable. The cable line price, I know the difference. I installed miles of it for a living. The cable line price was $350. But the correct cable that they would install, now $1,500 of labor for two men is a heck of a lot of money when I know myself and another person can do it in less than two hours. There's an amplifier cost, that's a given. My other issue is, I picked up here and there, certain people said after negotiations, they reduce the fee astronomically. What do you mean? How can you do it after negotiations? What's that all about? The fee for labor and the fee for the cable is still the same. We're signing a contract with the cable people for the charter pack or whatever it is for a certain amount of years. It has nothing to do with these little negotiations because they're afraid of being brought to court or something else. This is out of control. Out of control.
Maybe I'd address the question to Charter. Has there been negotiations over the charges that have been suggested to...
There have been negotiations in one or two instances in this town where the cost to the customer was less than $1,000. And we said, "We would waive that in exchange for you signing up for a two-year contract where there's a rate lock in that for a triple play of services." So we know that we're going to have a customer. And we know that we're going to get a return on that investment. And then we waived that fee.
Was that discount made available to all citizens?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Also ended up is I had to sign a two-year contract with my price reduced by half to $750. That was the only way to do that. Okay, signed a two-year contract. Okay, I just went from $3,800, originally $2,800 to $3,800, down to $750. I can't see how, I run a business, how I can run a business going down.
And that was for you with...
I'm a customer.
And that was... Yeah, I'm just trying to remember the date you...
Originally it was in '07. Prior to the expiration of this contract, they gave the price of $2,800, which I felt was absolutely terrible.
Let me ask you a question. I think I just heard something. Prior to August 24th of 2007, you were being charged?
No, I went and approached them.
They told you a charge?
And they told me $2,800. I went to their TV, because I couldn't afford to pay that kind of long-range cable TV.
But that was prior to August 24th? Okay, thank you. Mr. Swanson.
Mr. Chairman, just an observation here. Obviously, we're working on a 14-year-old contract that is in a, you know, in a discipline like this that changes yearly. I can't imagine this thing hasn't been kept up to the day, as it probably should now. But be that as it may, you know, whether you've got a double negative or a single positive or lack of a positive, the fact of the matter is this whole thing about extra charging is questionable at best. I haven't heard anybody in here tonight complain where there's been an extraordinary service, myself included, 600 feet. I haven't heard anybody complaining that we should not have paid a fair and equitable increase in cost over the past. What others have changed. What I've heard, and in my case as well, is that that charge has been extraordinary. It has not been fair and equitable. And when you're running in a situation, you get the kind of outcry that you're dealing with tonight. Had these charges been reasonable, you wouldn't have any of us here tonight.
I don't hear a question in there, so there's nothing to direct to them, correct?
They were just allowed to...
I appreciate that. But I think they wish to address that issue.
I'd like to address the comments of, you know, so I've heard comments. My name is Greg Garabee. I'm the Vice President and General Manager for Charter Communications for the last four years. Been Director of Engineering for the 15 years prior to that. I want to try to reassure everyone that there's more to the designing cable plant and the placement of cable plant than going down, buying a roll of cable, putting it in the ground, connecting it up, put a connector on both ends, and we're on our way. Right? The first thing that has to happen is we send someone out to do a survey. So then that survey comes back. So just bear with me and just think through the costs here. So we roll a truck out there, we do a survey. We have to survey the poles. Maybe we have to do pole applications. We have to do a survey to the house. We have to look at our plant that's on the road, figure out the best documentation to give our design department. Now it comes into the design department. Now they have to review the fiber optics that we have out there, the cable plant that's on the street. We have to review how far the house is off the road. We have to look and see if we need a fiber optic node. We need to see if we need, you know, and these are, you know, a fiber optic node is a couple of thousand dollars. An amplifier is a couple of thousand dollars. So now we get this back, we get this out of design. We put it out to our contractors. We get a quote, we have standard contractor pricing to run the cable, do this. And then we have to go out, do the pole applications, and then send the truck out and run that cable. So to hear that I priced it out for $300 to run cable 1,000 feet is just not realistic. I could reassure you that, you know, what we have here is I think we can wrangle all night long about a contract, a license interpretation. But I can reassure you, we're not in the business to make money off of these installations. And I've heard those acquisitions and I take issue with that because that's not the case. And if you hear of a case of there's negotiation going on or if there's, you know, we're trying to work with the customer to lower the price by having them enter into a two-year guarantee for triple play services, you know, is it realistic to think that we're going to run cable 1,000 feet off the road and spend $4,000 and get to the house and then have the customer say, "Well, I don't want service"? In this scenario, that's what we're saying can happen. We're not in that business. We've worked together, Tom and I have worked together. We've tried to say, "Okay, how much can we do this in-house versus putting it out to a contractor"? And that's why prices change. So we try to cut some costs out of it and work as best we can to get service. It's in our best interest to gain customers. So I just want to address the fact that we're not in the business to make money off of these installations.
I understand what you're saying. And I have to believe that some of those charges are built into our monthly rates, that it's not just being passed along to the individual person.
That's not, that's not a true statement. It's not built in the monthly rates. These are all taken one at a time.
You're not able to charge them to the individual customer. They're going to be built into the rate structure of your plan.
Well, I suppose at some point, everything is built into the rate structure.
David.
I recognize that you have costs installing cable. I don't think anyone's denying that. We sit before here on the eve of starting a new contract. And I think the real issue is trust. And I think we can't trust you, to cut to this point. You've violated the contract, in our opinion.
That's an interpretation.
In our opinion. I'm not an attorney, but the town council agrees. So I think before we move forward to establish a new contract with Charter, we need reassurances, we need to develop more trust. And we're not getting there right now. And I think that's the real juxtaposition problem here is that we need trust. And I don't see it. You guys may decide somewhere along the line, just hear me out, as you did with this contract, you're just going to add a fee in because it's not listed there. That's not really right. If it's not in a contract, you can't charge for it.
So again, May...
And you signed the bad contract in '97. And I recognize that.
Again, that's interpretation of the contract. And, you know, Tom pointed out that a lot of these issues started to bubble up after that contract had no one.
Mr. Bulicki, when did you get charged for that? Mr. Bulicki.
I'm sorry.
When did you get charged for your installation?
The last one I paid my bill for that.
2007?
It was my first application for the charge in 2007, yes.
August of 2007.
Because of the charge. I think what the first issue here is, there's no insistence. They don't remade people for 50 feet off the road, but yet they're overcharging people for their 500 feet off the road.
So it...
And my bill wasn't consistent. It was $1,000, $3,000.
My point being is that for his connection, that was not just, you can't just say all the pitchforks came out after that meeting. I've been hearing about his plight, but didn't know what to do. And there have been other complaints all along. And all of a sudden, everybody just accepts it. But in retrospect, it wasn't in the contract. And the service people at your service center quote that. And maybe they don't know the differences between the different towns and the contracts between the different towns. And so when a customer in our town calls up today and says, "I live 1,000 feet off the road because of the lifestyle I want to live", whatever that means, that service individual is going to say, "Oh, this is what your costs are going to be per foot or whatever". Because that service person doesn't know the contract for the town of Southampton. Because in the contract of town of Southampton, that is not in there. It's in the new contract. We'll get to that. But it's not in the old contract.
Again, it's interpretation. And we can wrangle, and we're going to wrangle over that. But in answer to your question, how do we build trust? We put the language in a contract so that we don't have to wrangle over interpretations of it. It's...
Go here. And then I have a comment.
Just had a couple of observations about this whole process. First of which is the entire amount of money under discussion here is what, $10,000 bucks? You've got two Vice Presidents, Associate General Counsel, and our Counsel. If you guys were on an hourly basis, we would probably have exceeded that by now based on the time you've put in. In my experience, living in this country and several other countries, if you have a monopoly, a duopoly, an oligopoly, or anything like that, it is very, very easy to get the citizenry up in arms with the pitchforks because they do not feel that they have a choice. So I see two things here. I think you guys ought to refund the monies that were charged for these over and above constructions. And two, learn that when citizens, and I would think all of you providers would know this, when you have this monopoly, you have a duopoly here because Verizon does offer direct service internet. So the thing to remember here is in these small towns, when people don't have a choice, they tend to get hyper-emotional about their lack of choice. And that distorts the economic reality. So if you guys as business people, the $10,000 you're dealing with is pocket change compared to what it costs to have you three here tonight. So I don't get it from a business perspective. I don't get it from a public relations perspective, why we're even all sitting here. Thank you.
I have one more comment to make. And it's section 15.1 of the original contract. This instrument contains the entire agreement between the parties, supersedes all prior agreements or proposals except as incorporated by specific reference herein and cannot be changed orally, but only by an instrument in writing executed by the parties. Someone else, Bill.
I think we can go around this, round and round and round in terms of... I think everybody has to realize what the reality was back 14 years ago. Companies came into a rural town. They weren't coming into Boston. They weren't coming into Cambridge. They weren't hooking their houses stacked up along the public way. They came into a rural town. They negotiated a contract with huge plots of land. And even back then, there were houses significantly off the road. So you come into a contract, you enter into a license negotiation, you come in with open eyes, you sign your contract, like it or not, that's where we are now. And I will probably be the first to agree with that. Business-wise, it probably doesn't make a lot of sense. But you have to go back and look at what the business negotiated 14 years ago, coming into rural Southampton. This is what we wanted. This is what we have. You agreed to hook up every resident. You defined what a residential hookup was in two different places. One of which, as long as it was on a public way, as long as you didn't have to cross another town boundary, as long as you didn't have to cross private property, it fit within your definition of a residential hookup. And you agreed to hook them up. You didn't ask for more money to hook them up if they were further away. You could have. Maybe it wasn't the industry standard at the time, and you certainly could have. You didn't do it. Apparently, you're doing it now, and then you forget, and then you lose. But we can go round and round with regard to how the industry has changed. Obviously, it's changed. But you signed something back 14 years ago, live with it.
Town Council, any comments?
Just some concluding thoughts, Mr. Chairman, through you and the members of the public. Look, it doesn't matter whether the billings were done before or after the time that the license supposedly expired. It doesn't matter whether it makes good business sense. It does. It doesn't matter whether it's good or bad PR. It's bad PR. The only thing that matters is, is there legal authority in the license? And Mr. Cohen's arguments all make perfect business sense, but they make no legal sense. There's no authority in the license. Cable, if you take a look at the cable license in the specific section 3.1, it talks about conditions under which they will cable the town. Cable service shall be being available to all homes in the town provided. One, two, three. They have to be located along public ways. They have to have a public way that's accessible. And there has to be, if there are easements and pole permits, they have to be able to do that. One, two, and three. They knew how to write the conditions into their license under which they agreed to be bound to provide service to the public. And they wrote in there, condition one, condition two, and condition three. There's no four there. There's no four that says they get to charge contributions in aid of construction. And the argument that Charter has made tonight, that that's the standard all over the place, that only enhances the town's position. Because if that is a standard, and if that is considered necessary everywhere else in order to do that, the fact that we don't have it here means it was never the intent of the parties when the license is written. And that's what governs the legal rights and liabilities and obligations of the party here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Charter, want anything further?
I would just suggest, and I appreciate the comments of all the selectmen and everybody here tonight. And I thank you for coming. I'm sorry that you came out under these circumstances. Trust is a two-way street. We need to develop trust on both sides. And again, I've been trying to set up some discussions of a license renewal for two years. It shouldn't take that long. We would be happy to entertain some of these issues in the context of continuing our first meeting to discuss a different license. And update that license into 2011 as opposed to 1997.
Okay, just want to ask one thing. You have to understand, this is a small town. We're all volunteers. And I'm not going to make excuses, but this is the way it is. All of us have full-time jobs, except for Dougie. He's retired. You know, I was late here because I was tied up doing what I do as a day job. And everybody that works in this town and on boards and committees, finance, we're all volunteers. We're committed to the well-being of this town. We step up and we understand what town means about community and volunteering for a town. There was a cable commission. It was hard to mend. It was hard to get people to be involved with it. But when you speak of trust, there was no mal-intent from our standpoint. It was just limitations of a small town that still practices the traditional democratic town meeting type of government where we don't have the people that we can get. I mean, all we have is what we have. And it was no mal-intent. So when we talk about trust, we're trying to be up here being as trustful as possible. And I just explained why it's been taking a while to do this. And it was no attempt to deceive. why it's been taking a while to do this. And it was no, no attempt to deceive Charter at all. Okay? I just wanna make that clear. Okay?
Can I, can I say something here? I, I think that, you know, and I, I'm sorry, I can't see that far down, but what's your name?
Jess Dodds.
I, I, I think that, you know, before we, we start to discuss, you, you made a perfectly valid point. Why don't we, public relations, customer satisfaction, you know, why don't we, you know, try to negotiate our way through this? It makes perfect sense, but not as long as the liability is still out there. Meaning that if there's no license, and there's no willingness to come to the table, when you, when you know and you've heard from your own counsel, that in every other cable license that's out there, a contract, that there's some limit to the amount of liability, and yes, we're asking for that, and I've heard the interpretation, our interpretation, your interpretation, of course, there's gonna be two different interpretations, and we, we still need to settle through that, but knowing that, and admittedly, that this is, even in your interpretation of this contract, it's a bad contract. So before we come to the table to start to talk about settling anything, we have to limit the liability.
And here's how, I think I'd like to proceed doing this. At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some more second.
David?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. At this point in time, I would ask Town Council, that we have, I believe, fifteen days to reach our decision. So we have to make a decision within fifteen days, which puts a very heavy burden on us, because our next meeting is Tuesday, and what's the agenda?
A week ago, a week from today.
A week from today. What's our agenda like then?
We have a full agenda.
And what about the following Tuesday?
Following Tuesday, we have a lighter agenda.
And that, does that keep us within our fifteen days?
Yes, we have to give a response.
Should be fourteen, climb that.
Fourteen days from today.
Okay, so my suggestion to the Select Board, if they'll entertain that, is we put Charter decision-making process for the hearing on that night. What night was that?
March twenty-ninth.
March twenty-ninth. Can all the Select Board be here? Jess?
Yeah, I can be there.
Okay. And that will be the night, um, unless the Select Board wishes to deliberate tonight, or discuss further options.
I have a meeting at five thirty that night, but I could probably get here by seven.
Um, do, do we know what the structure of that night is, whether?
I don't believe we have anything on the agenda at this time.
Put this on for seven oh five?
Mm-hmm.
Do our deliberations and decide where we're going from there. And then I think we need to schedule Charter in for contract negotiation.
I think we're going the right way. We need to settle the old contract before we move on. I mean, that's really what we're talking about.
Well, do you wanna also entertain Charter's new contract that same evening, either deliberate during the deliberations, after the deliberations, before the deliberations, whatever you.
The best of the agenda, I may.
Well, that's, she's saying there's nothing.
Nothing for the twenty-ninth, because it was an off week.
Do you wanna wait for a response from Charter regarding our, you know, our, I mean, Jess made a comment about reimbursement and stuff. Do you wanna wait for a response?
That's not our, that's not our forte. Our forte is to decide whether or not they are in violation of their contract.
I still think we ought to have the negotiations within the context of a new contract, the renewal.
But the first, the, the issue that we're here tonight about is the hearing. The hearing is whether they're in default on their contract. That needs to be decided within fifteen days. You're not gonna negotiate a new contract in the next fifteen days.
Correct. So we'll do it that Tuesday night now.
So the question that's gonna be debated on Tuesday night would be Charter's default.
Yes.
And the, then the next question is, do you wish to go from that discussion into a contract discussion on Tuesday night?
Yes, I would like to do that.
So serially, default, and/or discussion of contract.
And around that, some deliberation, which Jess has said about remedies.
Of course, if I may?
Certainly.
And did I interrupt you? I'm sorry. Okay. Could we, I, I know we have fifteen legal days to come to a conclusion here or an agreement. Could we, upon mutual consent, negotiate the contract first, and then settle this issue? Upon mutual consent?
I think the, the resolution of your, your breach discussion, um, would be handled much more smoothly in the best interest of all parties if it was done in the context of a new license.
I, I.
Mike, can we meet with the attorney? Let's just put on the agenda for the Tuesday night. Only two Town Councils to discuss this at the end of the evening today?
Um, are you suggesting an executive session?
Yeah, just one here.
I don't think you can go into executive session over that issue.
Why, it's in the, well.
We don't have anything scheduled for that.
This, it, it's a matter, my personal opinion is you decide the default or no default, and go into contract negotiations. That's my opinion.
All right. What, one of the questions I have is.
Because otherwise, we're being, it's, it's almost like we're being in a heist to review the default. If we grant the con- contract, I can see that.
Well, let me just ask you a few questions while Town Council's here. I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Bill Hewitt.
Bill. Um, Dave, um, if we decide that they're in default, what happens next, and what are, what's the procedure at that time? Just so I understand.
Well, you have the option of either revoking the license, or you have the option of assessing liquidated damages, or you have the option of, of doing nothing. Um, if, for example, we were to invoke liquidated damages, in my opinion, you could issue an order saying, "We find you in default, and we're invoking liquidated damages, but we can suspend that pending negotiations of a new license and other forms of settlement," satisfactory to the board. And if the board isn't satisfied with other forms of settlement, then the liquidated damages are invoked, and you've gotta pay. So there are lots of options here. There are probably ways to do almost everything that collectively you're gonna wanna do.
If we revoke, what happens to the, in general? Does, does all of a sudden, everyone loses cable in town, or, I mean, what happens at that point?
If the license is revoked?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, but I'll tell you what will happen. Charter will go into the nearest court and get an injunction to stop that, and in order to resume negotiations. So your license, your TV sets aren't gonna go out.
Okay.
Unless Charter doesn't operate the way other cable companies do, and I, I suspect that that's what they would do.
All right. So if we revoke the, the license, then they would probably get a, go to, take it to court, and, but nothing would change the service for the town?
Yeah.
I have a question, Council, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. If we do not come to a agreement with these people, where else will we go for service?
That's, that's a problem. Um.
We, we have many people in here tonight that are very, very upset with them, very, very unhappy. If we cannot come to an agreement, we've all gotta understand this. If we can't come to an agreement with these folks, or they can't come to an agreement with us, where do we go from there?
Well, let me start at the beginning. This is a, um, it's a, it's a license in which there is a presumptive right of renewal. And what that means is that there are very, very limited legal bases to say no, and you, we will not renew your license. One of them is violation of the prior license and failure, failure to cure it after notice and opportunity to cure. So if, after notice and opportunity to cure, you find that there's been a breach of the license, and they're not remedying that breach, they're not fixing it, then you have the right to say, "Your license is revoked." And as I said, they'll probably go into court, and they'll probably get an injunction. So the only way that you'll ever get another cable operator to come in after, uh, after Charter, is to make your revocation stick and get a court to order, "Yes, the town is right, they're wrong, they're outta here." Uh, and then they're gone, and then you've got to entice another cable operator to come in and take over their equipment and buy out the plant, and you've got, you know, very legally complicated and economically and financially complicated discussions and negotiations.
Has that happened, has that happened anywhere in Massachusetts, any?
Not happened anywhere in Massachusetts. It has happened elsewhere in the United States, but it's rare. It's a strange.
A rare event, okay.
It's very important for the people in here, because you folks have allegedly been wrong. So it's very important for you to realize what we, what we have to deal with here. We just can't fire 'em and say, "Hit the road, and we're gonna have you as our new provider." It just doesn't work like that. The practical aspect, the prac- as a practical matter, uh, we're married to them, and we're not gonna get a divorce. We just have to work it out. And we have to work out the breach issue, and we have to work out a new license issue, and I think we can do that. But if there's an expectation that we can just throw Charter out and bring somebody else in, that's not realistic. That's probably not gonna happen.
The, the hearing has been suspended, but I'm told that someone has a question in the audience? Right.
I don't have a question with that. Since four years without a contract, that's the bottom line. I mean, you're sitting here negotiating, and people's falling with their money, but four years time, we haven't signed, we haven't negotiated for a contract. So who's at fault here?
Well, we did have a cable.
Even of that.
We had a cable com- committee that did meet and formulate plans, and I did, I don't know whether they met.
Well, I think that it's a combined, um, when I first started, Charter didn't have, Tom hadn't started yet, and they had another person for a year, an intern person, and we, the Charter Commission did work, and we sent in, um, some documents to them. But they had more focused on internet and not really focused on cable. Um, so then after probably about maybe six months or a year after Tom got in, we did the ascertainment, and then we started, you know, and you've had a couple meetings to discuss the terms.
It has not been.
Right. Over the last two years, we have been working on it, but it took a couple years to get it.
Right, make a, could I?
For this thing to run in four years.
Mike, can I answer that?
Wait a minute.
Can I ask?
Whoa, 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 let's start at this end of the table.
It took eleven years to negotiate the United States Constitution. Things don't happen overnight.
And nothing to do with that.
Mike, can I just, well, Mike, Mike.
Mike, or?
Just let me just, if you go out in the hallway, you'll find several postings on different committees and boards for this town. The people of this town don't realize how much effort it takes to run the town. You go to a town meeting, how many people show up?
Ninety? Twenty-five.
Okay? How many voters? How many voters are in town? Three thousand? And I'm not gonna use the word apathy, but it's just maybe an unknown. And so we've posted positions for the cable committee all along. All the vacancies are posted. They're posted on the website. If people wanna get involved, I, I ask them to get involved and to join some of these committees. But for us as board of selectmen and staff, all the committees, it's just, it's unreasonable. And we have to rely on the volunteers from the, the town to step up and become involved. So if you wanna become involved, let me know. Okay?
Mr. Blanchard, Mr. Blanch, Mr. Blanchard wishes to speak.
Okay. Sir, and everybody, uh, it is the responsibility to oversee every board and committee in this town. Whatever. Let me finish. Uh, whether we do or do not have a cable committee that's active is irrelevant. The point of it is, it is our responsibility, therefore it is our failure, period. And we accept the responsibility. Done.
That, that being said, I'm gonna suggest that we take a short break and move on to the balance of our agenda for the evening.
Sure.
Um, it's eight forty-eight. Why don't we reconvene in five to ten minutes? How about five o'clock?